We'll go ahead and call this work session to order. Welcome, everybody. We have members of our planning commission joining us for this. Quickly for our council, I'll just go through our meeting agenda for tonight. If there's any questions or clarification for staff, please pose these at this time. We will call for any changes to the agenda. And we'll go to public comment. Jeff, has there been anyone who submitted anything for public comment?
Not standing here.
All right, then we don't have any response to last week doing for the last meeting.
I don't believe there's any comment.
Well, then have a presentation from our government relations update. Under the consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from our April third meeting, as well as a contract amendment to number three wastewater treatment plant engineering services. Under new business, we have the twenty twenty-three pavement maintenance program construction contract to award. And then we'll wrap up the evening with report from our city manager and her committee and council reports. All right, with that, Jeff, will you please call the role for ours? I guess this is a joint work session.
Yes, Mayor, uh, President Chair Crosby. Let's see, yes, uh, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Putin.
She's excuse.
Hey, Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Myron.
Here.
Mr. Ramsay.
Here.
And Councilman.
Present.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Excused.
Councilor Huckinson.
You're.
The mayor pull in.
Here. Thank you, Tyler. And with that, we'll get our city council planning commission work session going. Uh, we have a transportation system plan, um, update work session. Jordan, do you want to kick this off?
Yeah, I'll let you do the introduction. Staff reporter, uh, we have a couple consultants here, uh, in person, but also on as well. In your packet, I think you saw the draft T S B. Um, I'm sure everybody read it cover to cover. It's why our consultants and staff are here to all kind of show through that, uh, today's presentation work session.
And just put it in the chat G P T, ask it to give it to me in four bull and lines. We're good.
Yeah, so we have Ria with D K S to my right. We have Darcy, um, on the screen. Um, and she's with M I G A P G. Ria is with D K S and has been on the project for, was it three plus years now? It's been a long project. Um, and then Ryan Wood is also here from Public Works and he's been part of the project team. And then I know Jenny Coker is also, um, visible on the screen. And then I've been the project lead since we had, uh, received the T G M grant, I believe in two thousand nineteen. So it's been a very long project, but we're hoping to come to a conclusion with adoption of it in, in June. And then we can kind of start the next steps and that's implementing more of the projects in there over the next ten to fifteen years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ria.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Can everyone hear me? Okay. All right. So thanks, everyone. So yeah, you guys already kind of stole my intro, but yeah, we're updating the, oh, I gotta share. Sorry, it's something I thought you switched or something. How do I share?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm new to this. Thank you.
You can keep you.
No, say, oh, yeah, okay. So, so yeah, anyways, as Kelly said, we've been working on the transportation system plan for quite a while and I'm just going to walk you guys through a little bit of what our agenda will be tonight and what our objectives are and what the next steps will be. Thank you. So, good. All right. So with that. Hold on one second. Technical stuff. Okay. Um, so briefly, our agenda for tonight, um, I'll be giving a project update to let you know, you know, what we've been doing, where we're going, what's left. Um, I want to go over some of the revisions that will be, that we've already made and that are pending for the document. And then I really want to walk through the document with you guys and answer all your questions tonight that you have. And then Darcy's, um, listening in as well. She's going to go over the agenda item number four, which are the proposed code amendments that go with the T S P update. So with that, let's jump right in. So just a little bit of the planning process in the T S P and where we're at. Um, as Kelly said, we've started back in twenty nineteen. I think we're on tech memo nine right now that we've written with, you know, various versions of E S O. So we've gone through a lot of work, but just as a reminder, the way that T S B works is we start with learning and understanding. If you recall, we had done a bunch of data gathering, understanding what the existing conditions are like for the system. Um, and when I refer to the transportation system, I mean, walking and biking and transit and driving. We started talking about what are the community values? What are our transportation goals for Sandy? And then with those, we came up with performance measures. How are we going to know how the system's working? And what are the criteria we will use to evaluate projects and, and decide what our priorities are? Um, and then from that, we went through and we analyzed and evaluated all of the data. We determine what the future is going to look like. This is a twenty-year planning horizon. Um, so we're looking at a year twenty forty-three plan. Um, since we'd be adopting in twenty twenty-three, um, making sure we're looking for any types of solutions to the types of deficiencies and needs that we identified for the future. Um, and then we've been working with the community. Um, we've had open houses. We've had a virtual open house. I was at Future Fest and talking to people there as well as part of the comp plan update and listening to them. So we've made quite a few refinements to what those solutions could be and what's important to the community. And then as part of the recommended adopt part of the process, really going through and identifying what are our preferred alternatives and what's the most important. And that's the last workshop session that I had with you. We did quite a few refinements based on that discussion that we had. So we are where that orange arrow is right now. We're getting close to the end. Um, with, obviously, um, we'll have our adoption hearings coming up shortly. So a little bit, yeah, where we've been. So we put together this draft T S P document in March. Um, it's now April. We're having this joint work session with you all. Um, we're also going to have one more touch with the advisory committee, um, that we have that's established just for this T S P. That would be, I think, our fourth or fifth touch with them as well. So they can review the T S P document and get some comments back to us. And then in May, we'll be busy doing final edits to that draft T S P, um, incorporating all of the comments that we hear in April. And then in June, we have scheduled, um, hearings both for planning commission and city council and hopefully adopting the T S P. Um, so a little bit about the objective for tonight, I wanted to make sure we stayed focused. So what I'm really here to ask you guys tonight is are we advancing the transportation system plan goals that we came up with several years ago? We all agreed this is, you know, what we want our community to look like and, and they're in the document. We'll go over them tonight. But are we really, you know, advancing those as much as possible? And then we have a twenty-year plan that's a, that is attached to our funding sources. Are these really the highest values? We have this much money to spend. Is this what we all agree we want to spend the money on? And then I do want to go through the document, um, make sure if there's any questions or any recommendations for revisions that this group has. This is the best time to have that conversation so we can make as many edits as possible before we go into hearings. Um, yeah, and just is it ready? I think it's a lot easier if we talk about it now than if we do it at the hearings. I'd love to have, you know, such a nodding heads when we get there in June and we go right for adoption. And then the questions for Darcy, when she goes over the code amendments is, are these the right code amendments to help support the transportation system plan that we're proposing? So that's the focus for tonight. Any questions so far? No, okay. I'll keep moving through. So I did want to highlight some of the updates that we made from the work session number two that we had with this group. Just so you know that we were listening to you and how we address them. So there's a project in the T S P, um, D six. It's a highway two eleven at Procter, um, the northbound approach. Um, we made some modifications to the project description to make sure that it was clearly indicating that it was the, the, to set back the stop bar and the clear zone. So we've, we've modified that a bit because we talked about it and I don't know if you guys remember, we looked at the picture and there's, there's an issue where it's really hard to make a turn there. Um, and then we did also move that project to what we call the financially constrained project list. Or it's one of the groups of projects that we think is reasonably funded in the next twenty years. And it's a fairly low cost project. Um, so I think it's reasonable. It's really some striping and some plans. So it's pretty reasonable to have that done in the next twenty years. And then another project we've made edits to is D nine. Um, that's highway two eleven to Barco Road. So it used to be called this, the intersection control evaluation. And we talked about that a lot last time. So what we have done is we've upgraded this project. It has a new name. Now it's the highway two eleven to Barker Road multimodal improvements. Because we had a lot of discussion about it's, and we heard a lot from the community. It's really, um, scary to cross there as a pedestrian. And I think as, as vehicles aren't comfortable pulling out. And then based on your guys' feedback, we also updated the allocated funding to half a million dollars. And it is on the financially constrained project was too. It was before. So we, we grew that project to be something that was more reflective of what you guys in the community were asking for there. And then we increased the funding towards it.
Is that, is that a study evaluation?
No, it's that actual. Great. All of the above. So it's, because we don't know what we need to do there yet. Signal roundabout. We don't know. So it's first figure it out and then get something built. So it's better. Yep. Yes, yes. Yep. Yeah, no, great question. And then D twenty-four, um, that's a small change. Uh, we have a project highway two eleven Gunderson Roundabout. We reduced the funding or the cost estimate for that project just based on some recent cost estimates that we've had. We've been helping the city kind of advance that design for that project.
As I say, when do they go down?
Well. So we, we have a.
Be bonus.
Sure, sure, sure. I'll get you in a minute. Um, we have a civil engineer on board that was helping us with the cost estimates. And I think the one before was very high, pie in the sky. Uh, the right of ways been dedicated that I think now that we know that it's going to be a roundabout, because before we didn't even know what it was going to be. It was just a bunch of money towards something. So now that we know that it's going to be a roundabout, we've done this side study with the city and we've have a civil engineer involved. We've felt comfortable bringing the cost down. So, so, I mean, based on today. Okay, uh, so three other edits that we've had. There is a U S twenty-six, six speed zone study. Um, that was previously described as from Ten Eyck out to Furwood. And the comments from this group was, why don't we just reduce it to the sandy U G B and not go outside of it? Which makes sense. So we have reduced the east limits of the study in the description on that one. Um, project P one, that's a pedestrian project, um, three hundred sixty-second avenue from Chinook Street to Industrial Way. We had some sidewalk infill there. Um, we reduced the allocated funding there from one and a half to one. Uh, well, because what we were trying to do is the next one, which is P three. Um, we increased the sidewalk infill on Bluff Road. Um, previously, it was west sidewalk infill, two hundred feet north of Marcella Court to Green Mountain Street. And we extended that. Now it goes all the way up on Bluff Drive across from where the viewpoint is. Um, and that cost increased a bit. So we did a little bit of shuffling, I think.
Yeah, so there's already a sidewalk to Bell Street. So I'm.
Oh wait, which one?
On Bluff Road, there's a sidewalk to Bell Street.
Yeah, so this is from Bell Street north to the, to the viewpoint.
Right, saying Marcela.
Oh, that.
Court.
Well, before it was two hundred feet north of Marcella Court to Green Street. Sorry, Green.
Only section you need is Marcella Court to Green Mount. So.
Does that get us all the way to the viewpoint?
Uh, sorry. If you want to go to the viewpoint, well, kind of, sort of, yeah. Yeah, you cross it.
Well, I just remember that we, we wanted to expand the limits to make sure there was a complete west side sidewalk all the way to where the crossing is going to go on the viewpoint.
Yeah, what it, what it, what this project did, and maybe we need to re-label.
Yeah, if it's not clear.
But basically it would extend the sidewalk from where it terminates right now with the intersection of Bell Street and Bluff all the way north. And then we also looked at doing a crossing at John's, because that was a comment.
Yeah.
From this group as well. And then the other thing we did is we moved this project from a future aspirational project to the financial constraint project list. So it would actually be one of the projects we'd do over the next twenty years.
Yep. But are the limits confusing?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, they already put in the crossing at kind of near Marcella Court. Maybe that was how Marcella Court came about. That one, uh, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate doing that. Um, folks really appreciate that. It's a, a pedestrian crossing light up thing uh, there by the football field, kind of near Marcella Court. And then again, you just need sidewalk from Bell to Green Mountain. And then if you want to put another little light up crossing there, like Green Mountain to get over to the viewpoint.
Yeah, and I think the address we're showing that one five nine three one is just a little bit north of Green Mountain Street to get it to where we wanted the, the new crossing to be.
That's actually just south.
Oh, is it just so?
I think it's just labeled incorrectly. We can go back.
Bell Green Mountain, yeah. Um, okay, and you're right. It's, it's one five nine three one. Yeah, because there's sidewalk. It's all kind of buckled. Uh, but it's, there is sidewalk from one five nine three one to Green Mount already.
Yeah, so it's one five nine three one.
Yeah.
South to Bell is what the project would be.
Yeah.
And then it would also be putting in a new crossing at Johnson.
Which is a separate project and on the financial. Yeah, it was already in there.
And then did you say that this is going to be a tier one, package one pro- project? Two, because I saw in the other stuff, it's still, it's identified as a two, which kind of concerned me.
It should not be.
Okay.
We'll double check that.
It was in the T S P plan, um, in the project list.
Okay.
When it came before you in November, it definitely was not a, one of the financially constrained projects. And then you guys had discussed it and we decided to move it up on.
Yeah, it's pretty low hanging, small project to lots of, yeah.
Anything else?
Um, well, that Chinook, three sixty-second to Chinook Industrial Way, I just can't understand, are we doing all that on the west side of the street or the east side of street?
Quite a bulk it up.
It's the west.
Is it? Okay, I didn't put all the detail.
And a lot of that, if one of the notes in the T S P, you'll see it actually says a lot of that would be the cost would be the burden of an development, but there is some of it where it's border city property and then some of it where it's already developed. And I think it would be very hard to trigger sidewalk there. So some of it would have to be city funded and some would be developer funded.
Yeah, which is why we reduced the funding. The limits are the same. We just felt we didn't need as much public funding for it.
Thanks.
Okay, great questions. And then I just wanted to point out, um, there are a couple pending T S P revisions that we are planning to make, but we haven't made in the document yet. But I wanted you guys to know, um, these are from comments that we received from O dot and we've just had some internal team meetings. Some, one of them is figures eighteen, nineteen and twenty show the O dot cross sections for U S twenty-six or at least attempt to. Um, but O dot's cross section standards are fairly complex based on speeds and classifications. And I say a lot of the T S Ps I work on, the agencies just aside not to even include the standards for the highway. It's not your road. There's reference, you know, manuals that O dot provides that if anybody needs to know what the cross sections are, they can clearly go to those. And, and staff said this was fine with them. They don't go to the T S P to ever look up the O dot standards for the cross section. So we're just going to remove those and put in the appropriate references so they can, so if anybody needs to find the highway cross section standards, they can find them. Um, and then the other comment was, we also attempted to put, um, O dot to U S twenty-six access facing standards in. That's table six. And we got some comments from them as well. Those are also fairly complex. And there were a couple of situations that we hadn't captured. Um, but in talking with Kelly and city staff, they do use the U S twenty-six facing standards often, especially when development comes in and it's fronting the highway. And you need to point to something quickly and says, no, you're not getting a driveway fifty feet from this traffic signal or, or driveway. That's not okay. So we are going to keep table six in, um, but we are going to address O dot's comments and flush out some of the situations that we hadn't addressed yet in that table. So it'll just become a bigger table.
Be interesting for you to be able to use that standard against the variance, uh, with some of the new housing legislation that's going through. So anytime we copy a standard, worry about obsolescence of the standard and making sure that you're always looking at the current.
Yep.
Point.
It, it is.
Why not just always go to the source?
Well, for, oh, oh.
Because we don't update these things very often. Apparently it takes a long time to do an update, so.
Well, I have worked for some cities that make updates every six months just to tweak little things, but, um.
But we've been working on this for a long time.
Oh, well, sure, sure. This is a whole update. Sure, but a little thing. Um, um, I mean, so the, the trade-off is if it's not in there at all, um, then everyone's going to find it. And I think if it's a standard that the city uses often, then I think the compromise is that you're right. We do risk not being up to date if O dot changed it. Though they don't change their standards very often. Um, but I want to make sure this is also what, this book, you know, the T S P will be a toolkit that the city is opening once a week.
But can't we get there with a hyperlink, considering most of us are electronic? We're not going to be talking about pulling out a paper copy and.
I don't, I carry a paper copy, but, uh, it's, I guess it's up to staff. It was just a request to Kelly to.
I would rather have it in there and then just have a caveat in there saying for, I mean, at, at the end of the day.
Put a caveat in there, then you haven't done anything, because you still have to go there to verify.
Yeah, but O dot has the final jurisdictional control over access anyways. So whatever we have in our T S P, it doesn't really matter. Like even, even a caveat, let me tell you something, even a caveat to reference this O dot table on this website, that doesn't hold much weight either, because at the end of the day, they still have access control management. And this just came up recently at Payless. They can still deny it, even though they've said in the past that they can prove it. So I, I don't, just pointing to a table even with a hyperlink, that's a little misleading as well. Because they can deny access.
I don't think you won your argument with me, but I'm a little voice. I do have a follow-up.
Yeah.
Not to sidetrack us.
Nothing. They just said, I mean, I, I can't actually speak to it right now because it's a pending line of intersection and.
So it's part of that.
Yeah, planning commissioners here, so we can't speak about it. Yeah. Unfortunately.
So nothing, nothing happened.
And it could, and it could be on appeal to you guys. So I, I, I want to refrain from talking about it.
Well, I, I will kind of weigh in because I, you know, one of the projects you have in there is Kate Schmidt. And I know, you know, that, that, that you've got the, you know, the Safeway intersection and you got Kate Schmidt and then, you know, possibly Payless and and, and then, but you're talking about expanding the U S twenty-six access spacing standards.
Oh, no, I just meant we're going to expand the content in table six.
Okay.
The numbers don't change at all. We were just missing, we need to add a couple of rows to it to make sure we're capturing all of the standards.
So, but it's access spacing include, you know, like the Kate Schmidt and the possible, you know, link around Payless to something else behind Payless in the Safeway that's already there. Is that the access?
It addresses all accesses onto the highway.
And.
And O, and we're just reflecting O dot standards. We were just trying to be helpful to the city to have those numbers at their fingertips when they, because they use them often.
It just seems like O dot's has really wide standards for, you know, you got to be way far away. And so the ability of us to develop our commercial district with all, with Kate Schmidt even, I don't think it meets the distance already. And so that's.
I don't think it does.
It doesn't, no.
But we have it as a big project.
I don't know how that.
So that's where I'm kind of like, you know, why are we proposing something that they, that doesn't meet their standards? Let alone this other thing that might also be out there. I don't know. But that's kind of where I, I want to make sure our T S P is, is feasible as possible.
Sure.
I don't, I wasn't around here when Kate Schmidt was approved. I don't know how it got full access. And I think if it now came in today in two thousand twenty-three, I think it would be denied. Just so you know, it'd be a right in, right out.
All right, well, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 no. Does anyone else have strong feelings about table six stays in, table six goes away? Yeah. Okay, okay. Um, and then the last pending T S P revision we had was just acknowledge page sixteen. We need to make a couple of updates to the description of the future transit system. Andy, the transit director, made some comments that a couple of things on there weren't, weren't accurate. So we'll be fixing that too. Just in case you guys noticed, we noticed too. All right. And then with that, let's jump into the actual document. Um, so I did want to just provide a couple of highlights to let you know, and you maybe you've noticed, this T S P document probably looks a lot different than the T S P that you have now that was done by my company back in twenty eleven. But, um, our approach to public facing documents are a lot different than they were even two years ago. So this is a much more executive summary looking document, um, definitely on purpose. Um, we want to have everything technical that we've done just back in the technical appendix. If someone's really interested, staff or a developer or anyone else that wants to dig through all those numbers, it's all in the technical appendix. But we really don't want to bore our intended audience, which is the stakeholders and the public. It's, you know, planning commission opens it, city council, city staff opens it. We really want this to be an accessible, very understandable, um, document for them. And then, as I mentioned before, and also a reference tool for the staff, because I know you guys are going to pick it up and use it all the time. We, as your on-call transportation engineers, will be picking it up as a reference as well. And it's nice to be able to flip through forty pages or fifty pages and not two hundred pages to find what you're looking for. So the document really is supposed to be focused on as many graphs and tables, um, as we can and really trying to limit any technical jargon when we can, just so it's not so overwhelming to the public that they can't read it. So. So I also want to ask you guys, um, I've inserted the T S P document into this PowerPoint. I can either walk through with, with you guys if you want and just highlight some things. Or if you guys have already done your homework and you already have like a list of burning questions that you want to get to, we can also do that as well. Whatever you guys think is the best use of your time. Yeah, okay. Okay. I just want to bore you if you've got your, you know, six questions, so. And I'll flip through it quickly. We're not going to like read every page and, and do the, do the whole thing at all. But of course, right, team, we acknowledge everybody that's worked on it. You can see there's a lot of people that have been involved over time. There's a little paragraph at the bottom that thanks O dot for their generous contribution to paying for it.
I, I would probably recommend just skip into chapter three with.
Oh, you don't even want, okay, well, I'll go fast.
That's the, you know, the meat of it.
It is, you're right. You're right. Yeah, I did want to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to go.
Okay, why, so I know this is the process. Make sure everybody knows what we're doing and why we're doing. These are your goals, which I think are important. Because we're going to, we're, because we're asking you if you guys think these goals are addressed.
And they, these goals were just reviewed at the last work session for the comp plan, if you remember. And we, we modified a few of them to reflect some of the, actually one of the changes that you made. Yeah, so they've been updated yet.
Oh, I did. Okay, thank you, Ken.
We'll make sure that's.
All right, so some, some backgrounds, some demographics. Um, whole existing system, what the deficiencies are. There you go, chapter three. So when we get into chapter three, we start talking about, and none of this text should be new. A lot of this is pulled from, uh, memos that we've written before. But we had had prior discussions about how we want to prioritize things. That's what's to the left. Um, we talk a little bit about twenty here horizon. There's a hundred and thirty-three projects totaling seven hundred and ten million dollars.
Can I have a big picture question?
Sure, yeah.
So the total tab I saw just on the road improvement stuff, I don't think that included, uh, everything like pedestrian bicycle was six hundred and thirty-eight million plus.
Is that in a table in here, I assume?
That's on page.
D.
Four.
Yeah, right here.
Whatever. Um, so. What, what I'm confused, okay, so then next step is setting, um, S D Cs.
Oh, system development charges, yes, yes.
And so are you setting S D Cs based on that number or the tier one project?
Oh, one separate. That's a, so.
I know it's a separate.
Sure.
But, you know, it.
Oh, yeah. So what we will, actually, we talked to Doc and I talked to Todd at F C S, who's working on the system development charge update, um, today. Um, the process, there's very specific rules on what kind of projects can be used for system development charges. It can only be projects that are capacity. So you can't do safety projects. You can't do studies, things like that. It has to be a capacity project and it has to be triggered by growth, right? Because developers are the ones that pay for it. So once the T S P is adopted, we'll be going through all these projects, picking up the ones that are feasible candidates to be paid by system development charges. And then some of them get scaled back depending on, is it an existing deficiency? Is it only triggered by growth? And then if it's built, is there leftover growth beyond twenty years? So there's some scaling that we have to do too. So some projects will only be maybe fifty percent paid by S D Cs. Um, so there's a whole process that will go through that. But we'll use these cost estimates.
See included in the S D Cs?
It's up to you guys. How about, to be determined, I would assume for sure all of package one would be covered. That, like I said, if they're eligible and they meet all that criteria and then we'll start with everything. But of course, you'll have a million dollar per trip. I'm joking, right? But a really, really high.
It's a sensitive subject, so don't go.
Okay, sorry. Well, I won't make jokes, but we will have to decide what projects can be on the list based on what's an acceptable system development charge for transportation. The, so we can tell you if it's this package, it's this much. Oh, that's too low. We're ready to go more. Well, then let's add five more projects based on priority. And then it went up to here. That's too high. So it'll definitely be like an iterative process on what goes on the list.
Well, given that, you know, we, the pod tier one has, what, how many millions? Is it a hundred million? Is, is that what you said?
No, the finance, there's ten point, I think, two, ten point seven million dollars that are available. Yeah. Yeah, those are reasonably funded in twenty years.
In twenty years. And so, you know, and so we basically have, you know, ten million in reasonably funded and six hundred and seventy million in, you know, aspirational. Not, not that we shouldn't be as aspirational as possible. I always like to dream. But I, but then when we talk about the S D Cs and all that stuff, I'm thinking that, you know, in no way, shape or form would we get anywhere near six hundred and seventy million dollars with the projects. And a lot of these projects are just extremely out there. And I, I get, you know, I, I get that sometimes it's good to just have them on a list and a plan so that, you know, because you don't know the timing of development and all that. And so if it's in the plan, you know, we didn't think it would come along in, you know, five or ten years, but here it is. Um, so I get having it on the plan, but I'm just also torn between, you know, how S D Cs get created and how. You know, how much we take on, and it just seems like we got a long list of projects.
Well, and I will say, a lot of this likely, it will not happen in the next twenty years. Some would say this is a fifty or sixty year plan. By the time this is all gets funded. And your city actually builds out, right? So, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I, so I'm very hesitant about cutting things off that were identified. So the fact that somebody somewhere has gone through the effort to identify scope, come up with some ballpark estimates and some descriptions of what they are. To me, they're meaningful part of the plan. They're prioritized, put in the list for reason, and we draw a cut line, right? At that point, I think that's when the affordability comes in, is when we draw that cut line. And that way the work is preserved, it's passed on to future councils, they get to. Oil it up to higher, like our new bar, bump that from below to above. Those kind of adjustments, I think, would be expected to go on. So for me, it doesn't bother me that. That it's six hundred million will never happen. It's it's work that's already done and memorialized.
But how do you, I mean, when when you do go to do the S D Cs, you're gonna have to.
Cause it's gonna make sure we're going. Don't give him all the just.
That's that's my point, that was just, you know.
But I don't. But that's the whole point is to look at the big picture and then make a rational decision about what's supportable. In in that year to year cycle for instance.
Yeah, and if we're going from ten to sixty million dollars with the projects, I would say yes, we're going from ten to six.
But we're not, so that's the key, we're not going to six hundred million, but we've identified it's six hundred million.
Worth of projects.
Most of these projects are in your current T S P. This isn't that different than your reality.
But just like we did, I mean, you know, not to pick on parks, but just like we did the last one, we looked at parks and had to draw that line of the S D C conversation. It's the same process. You look forward and then you you draw the line, that's kind of a whole different conversation.
Yeah, and and I will say, I think a lot of the importance of planning all the way out your U G B is just what you had said. You don't know when a developer is going to come in, and you do not want to miss that opportunity that, oh, my gosh, you're developing all this land and. That is the perfect place to get this collector in where we need this east west connectivity so bad. So that's, a lot of these projects are building out that that collector system. And they're very expensive and hopefully developers will pay for them if and when they come. And it also sets you up for grants. Aspirational projects are just as valid and get just as many points in a graph application. As a financially constrained project, and there is a lot of money out there for pedestrian bicycle safety kind of work, so keeping it in can only help. When you get extra points when you say it's in an adopted plan, so. Yeah, of course, that's a good math question. Let me go back. Well, I guess, so we've already jumped in right into the, into the table. Did anybody else have any other questions about? So the ones are financially constrained, the twos are aspirational. And you can see right here that project D nine, the two eleven debacle is on, isn't one, it's the last one on that page. So we we moved that to the financially constrained list and bumped up the money. Now, are there any other ones? I mean, I know we went through this pretty detailed before, but I just wanted to make sure you guys. Were comfortable with the list, comfortable of what was funded versus what wasn't, and then the the edits that we had made.
Okay, so so I thought D, I thought the package ones were the constrained ones.
They are, one is likely funded, two is not.
But you said we have ten million dollars?
We, the estimate, we have about ten million dollars to spend the next twenty years.
Right.
So if we add up.
Two, D twenty-one B alone is a tier of package one and it's thirteen million.
D twenty-one.
Just, I'm just.
No, 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 okay, what number started again?
Twenty-one B, that's the Henderson Road Extension, that's thirteen million right there. So, so I. Tier one.
That should be a two, you get an A plus for revisiting, yes, no, yeah, and that shouldn't be on the list. We have a.
Developer contributions that's go towards.
No, they don't, that, that was, is to be determined. Yeah, sorry, in Excel, it all adds up perfectly. And then when you give it to a graphics person and it goes into a really pretty document, that's the kind of stuff that happens, but no, that shouldn't be on there, you're right. Um, and here's just the the map showing everything, maybe it's easier to see, but you can see where we have some. The green is realignment projects versus purple, which is roadway extension projects, though I, there is a big caveat. The bypass is not.
Figured that.
I know, but we have put aside half a million dollars to advance planning.
You didn't throw the extra zero in the columns.
Uh, no, um, you said we couldn't make jokes tonight.
I'm sorry.
But yeah, we do have that half a million dollars to advance the planning of the bypass as a financially constrained project, so that's part of of the of the ten million. Um, but there's quite a few traffic calming projects, there's. Trying to think what else is on list, there's a lot of um safe routes to school work that's on the financially constrained list, because I know Kelly's feeling. Good about winning some grants for that, so we showed that as well. And we do in here? We do, if I keep going, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so then pedestrian. Ped bike.
That's the driver I saw, P twenty-seven said, you said it was a, a one package, but it's still listed, it shows us.
Let me not got updated, because the. The edit that we agreed to make is also not in here. That might have got missed in our last round, but yeah, P twenty-seven will have the updated description that I gave you and it and it will be.
Yeah, because I.
A one.
I was following the the platform where you were giving the presentation.
Good, and you're checking our work, thank you. Well, that's why we're here talking to you guys tonight. So, yeah, that should be a one, and then the cost shouldn't be that much either. It should be what I showed on my slide. Yeah.
So then the eighteen eight goes down.
Hmm, well, I don't, I'm guessing it is a typo and that number is correct out of Excel. Alt, I'll, this will all be triple checked, I promise.
Recheck.
Yeah.
Graphics of a spreadsheet, a spreadsheet.
Yeah, and then here's all the crossing projects, there are quite a few, and again, they're all package one. Then. Say, I don't think there are any bike projects that are in package one, nor trail projects.
I think, you know, I mean, for the for the package one, for the pedestrian. You know, the number one project is going to eat, eat, you know, more than half of it is the. Chinook to industrial waste sidewalk. And I just, when you look at like two eleven right out here, you know, past mining park. Yeah, I mean, that's in the heart of town and we have no sidewalk there on either side. And it's really, I I'm sure everybody's probably walked that at some point in their.
Why you bring it up, it just messed the journey by the same lady I did walking down, I scared the heck out of this week.
Yeah, so, and so I'm just kind of like thinking, I know that the Chinook to uh industrial waste stuff kind of gets you the. Salmon Creek Estates, but, and you know, and there's other ways I think to get to. Uh, well, you could, you know, from, you know, the whole debacle and every, you know, Jerry subdivision and. All of that stuff on debacle can, you know, already has a sidewalk over there. So I'm just wondering, really, you know. Getting, I mean, that's been a critical safety issue, and if there's no easy answers, that's the hard part, because it's steep hillsides on both sides of the road.
I would say on the three sixty second from Chinook North is quite a few. Um, people, I think. I want to say fifteen or twenty households in there had a woman, um, I can't think of her name right now, representing them, and she was very involved.
Yeah.
And so you have about fifteen to twenty. Property owners in Sammy Creek Estates that are asking for a sidewalk connection.
Well, yeah, but and I'm not downing that. She was one of your residents listed on your advisory committee. There's two residents listed, one of them is Heather Machay. And she's the other one, and I was like, who's that lady? And then they said, oh, she lives in Sammy Creek Estates. I said, oh, well, no wonders. That project is like, and I'm just kind of going, yeah, but you know, we're representing, everybody else here is representing all the huge population. That, you know, is here in the middle of our town and and parts beyond, and so, I mean, from a. You know, how many people are gonna. Benefit and how many people are actually walking back and forth down there, you know, past.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Say any of that, what I'm letting you know is like twenty households of people that live in town want a sidewalk.
Yeah.
I think for a million dollars, which about half of it at least would be paid by for developers.
That was the other area it was going to go, because.
You're you're getting a connection to residents and a solution. Highway two eleven, I agree with you, needs a solution, but you're not going to be able to do anything for a million dollars.
We're gonna have to do it all ourselves too.
Yeah, now that we own it, yeah.
Well, no, I just mean, is there any development popping up around there that would just to get it?
Very little.
Because when I saw that lady, I was looking for it. I didn't see any projected.
Well, you've got the one going in right over here, behind Joe's Donuts, right?
Yeah, that is like, like a hundred feet of highway front.
I mean, and the the reality is, having turned the twenty some odd years and walked that section a lot, most people are smart enough not to walk on it. It would be tremendously convenient to have that because of the sidewalk, yeah. And unfortunately for those people who choose to walk around it, it's dangerous, will have issues there's down the road.
Laura, are you wanting to talk or you just messing with your glasses?
Well, I I guess I I I don't understand what we're arguing here. I think we are or not, we're just, we're just asking a question of priorities, how one project got on the list or something else, but.
I was just gonna say, we do have a project D twenty-five, that's highway two eleven, it's under driving, but it's upgrading. All of two eleven, which would include sidewalk infill, but it's twenty-two million dollars to do it all, so I think that's part of the problem. I mean, there could be an option if we wanted to pull out just like the sidewalk infill on one side, but I still think with the topography and all of that. It it likely would, we'd have to bump a couple of other projects off to make room for that, not that that can't happen. That's why we're talking tonight. So I mean, if two eleven sidewalk infill is important, like I said, we could break off a smaller pedestrian project, pick a side of the road.
Right, but how big is that project?
Well.
I mean, this is.
It's.
Is it on the list here?
Well, it's it's just, it's absorbed with, we need to fix all two eleven.
How much, Kelly?
I mean, if the project's twenty-two million, it's going to be probably twelve to fifteen million to just do one side.
And how much total money do we got?
Eleven million.
All right, smooth forward.
So I can just point out too, so we just dropped, I just, just, just a second, I'm just. Sometimes paths aren't affordable, right? And I think when we look at the transit, the the transportation plan, we have to look at alternatives. So there are paths. Down mining or up over tougher. And we need to make those connections more positive, which goes right back to when we did bump up to the priority one, which is the cross debacle. Crossing, because that is your connector for a safe path up to the city.
So, you're twenty-two, where's this twenty-two thousand project? Is that in roads?
There's a project D twenty-five, it's a driving project, it's twenty-two million dollars, it's obviously not financially constrained, and it's to upgrade the. The hot, the roadway, which would include sidewalk and and building two eleven to standard. But we have it all lumped together as one package project. We haven't just pulled out like the sidewalk piece separately.
So that's P twenty-three, okay?
Yeah, and it points in the text. Well, there's, there's P twenty-three that says included in D twenty-five, yeah, because we've.
Well, yeah.
But if you're a build sidewalk, you'd also have to build road purpose.
Yeah, it's.
You'd have to build curb.
Drainage and some trees.
So.
Yeah, I know.
I'm saying, even if you do half it, half of it, just one side of the road, you're looking at twelve fifteen million. And because it's not going to be like a thirty percent deal.
Well, and we don't have the right of way.
You're gonna get mobilization fees, engineering fees, all that's gonna be the same no matter what.
Yeah.
Let's move ahead.
Okay, all good comments, anything else? Sorry, I'm just getting back to the pedestrian, bicycle. Transit projects, he's just come right out of the transit master plan, so we didn't, we didn't change anything there. And then we had three safety projects and they're all on the financially constrained list. Um, just extending the adaptive signal system that's on the highway. And then that's the speed, safety speed study that we talked about. Out, and then a speed zone study too. And O dot.
Where's the speed zone study?
Um, that is the one that's from Ten Eyck to the east. He's twenty-six.
That was actually one of the highest commented things, the speed, leaving the east side of town.
Yeah, and then, and then the other one's at Ten Eyck at the intersection.
We have the ability to do a citywide speed limit alter alteration, right?
Ah, well, on our streets.
On our streets, right, like bluff.
Right.
And two eleven and all that.
You do.
And so is that in here?
Well, so, it's funny, but we've, I've dug into this from many cities, so O dot's recently changed the rules, um, you still have to go through the state process. Of collecting the data and analyzing it, and there's a full flow chart that you. Yes, for each road, yeah, you can't, unless you want to just adopt like a twenty-five mile an hour ordinance on all of your city streets. That is an option.
That's a notch.
Yeah, because that could be, that's a statutory, that twenty-five miles an hour is an allowable statutory speed that you could pick. Anything over that, you have to go through the process to decide what the posted speed is.
And so if we did want to do such a study, this would be the process of identifying. Where we would want to study and how much those studies.
Yeah, and that doesn't have to go in the in the T S P.
Right.
I mean, O dot does it for free, you just have to ask them and and get in line with everybody else, but yeah, there's a.
For that line is getting longer.
It is, and last time I talked to them, it was six to nine months.
Yeah, I mean, and then the alternative was that cities can now do it on their own and submit that to. Kind of skip that line, but still takes.
Yeah, and you have to like do two or three to get approved, there's a high learning curve and training, yeah, and then you're using your staff time. To do it.
I don't care how it gets done, but you know.
Sure.
Things like bluff road, everybody wants, you know, reduced speed limits on those kind of things and.
Yeah.
How you make it, how you, I don't care how it happens, or what, you know, let's do it the most efficient way possible. There's, you know, the two eleven now that we own that. Are the whole problem with debacle is.
Jeff, I'd like to uh do a work, guys, I'd like to do a work session. Here over the next six months, it discusses why we wouldn't do a code of of twenty-five miles per hour everywhere. Okay, there might be a good reason, but just as I sit here and think of some of the different options, I don't know if I'm so against going twenty-five miles per hour on. On our jurisdiction roads, but let's have a conversation.
And we we would want to invite our transportation engineer to that discussion.
Fine, that's great.
Happy to help. Local jurisdiction, yes. Um, any other project discussions? The rest of the T S P really just goes over funding. Available funding.
We we did make um a couple of changes to the cross sections below the streets.
Oh, yeah, well, yes.
We are going to, we're proposing to increase the sidewalks to six feet instead of five feet, so it's. Consistent throughout the city on every street, or just besides six foot instead of five foot on levels.
Question on that.
And then the second one is um. Increasing the paved asphalt section from twenty-eight feet to thirty, and that was in consideration with fire district comments to make it two feet wider. For emergency responses. If we go much wider than that, the 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 problem is then stormwater systems are going to have to get larger. Maintenance is going to go up quite a bit, because we're gonna have to repave everything. So I think two feet's a good compromise, give them a little bit more room without putting another financial constraint on future city budgets.
Well, and wider roads can encourage higher speeds and safety issues, so it's a, it's a balance.
Okay, the, on the six foot sidewalk change, and maybe it's higher, but does that, is that. Clear of telephone poles and other things, mailboxes have. I mean, we've got old section that has telephone poles right down the middle of our sidewalk, which kind of makes it awkward for a bike level on the wheelchair.
That's a great question. It would be any new development would have to install six foot wide sidewalks, any new subdivisions. Clear.
Okay.
Right now, yeah, older, you're correct, older areas, as long as they can be forty-two inches, which is ADA, then they're. They are, they are kind of.
Forty-two with the telephone pole in the middle.
Well, if there are any that are just are less important too, we should be correcting those.
Check out mining. Mining department.
And then older subdivisions, the right of ways are dedicated, there's no room to give an extra foot, so they are, they're gonna remain five feet. It's just any new development that's some of the developers, the local streets will be, what is it, fifty-six feet wide or fifty-four feet wide instead of fifty feet wide?
Fifty-four.
Forty-four.
Yeah.
So the developers will be dedicating four additional feet for every road, two feet of that will go to sidewalks, two feet will go to the asphalt section. And in effect. The density will go down just slightly in the subdivision, because it'll be losing a little bit of right away, or a little bit to right away.
We did also add the Junker Street cross section from the study too.
Oh.
I, I have just an educational thing for me, so when, at what point does it trigger these? You keep seeing them like, you see them in. Other communities, I think they call them like green. You keep seeing them like, you see them in other communities, I think they call them like green sidewalks, where it's got like. It's like a super sidewalk, a bike lane sidewalks and whatever else goes on this thing, is that a population, or is that a community choice? Or is that a population trigger that, my understanding is they're required to put those into. You know what I'm talking about?
Like a shared use path, sorry, son.
Yeah, just go drive down like one seventy two, you'll see it down there.
That might be a, I, Ria probably knows more than I do on this, but that might be like a metro requirement.
Is, okay, so is it a metro thing?
It's not a metro even.
No. It's just a different treatment for bikes.
Yeah, that's what they look like.
They're. Yeah.
Full blocks and then, and then, and then the curb.
Yep, not a requirement, that's just one of the strategies that cities that are very bike friendly. Would impose where they're trying to get maybe a bicycle greenway, and there's a, and there's maybe areas where there's a challenging. You can't just have bike lanes on both sides because of right away or something like that, they'll put like a side path and they will put them side by side. That's just for like a little short connector to then get you back like probably to the neighborhood routes where they're at, but yeah, that's just, just a design treatment that they a hundred percent. Choose to do.
You seen them pop up and I didn't know that. I had a quick question about ten slides back.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it was on one of your graphs, it was C twenty three. It's in a financially constrained project.
Oh, table.
When it says the funding plan, it says funded, I was confused, if it's financially constrained, but it's funded.
But it's not constructed and it doesn't exist. So if it's a hundred percent funded, the money's in the bank somewhere, we don't wanna lose track of the project. But since it has not been completed, we just say funded, so we can, yeah, keep track of it. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
That is a good question. I wish there were more. Yeah. Anything else popping up for you guys? Alright, I'm sorry, just go back to standards now, making sure, so yeah, these are the ODOT cross sections, we're gonna get rid of these three, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And we'll expand table four, and I think that's, I don't know, sorry, table six. Um, the only other thing, I, I might be worth mentioning is we did add an intersection performance measure for roundabouts. You haven't had one before, you've only had one for signalized or unsignalized intersections, and now that. Um, we're looking at the two eleven Gunderson roundabout, you guys should have a standard for that, so we, we added one. Yeah, we ran out of time, yeah, I'm, I can totally be done. You guys wanna talk about code?
I, I have a quick question about specifically code, and since we're not gonna go over it. Is, I know we're doing this with the clear and, uh, objective audit, right, coincide, but is. Are we having a level of service for our arterials and that, that are gonna trigger. A capacity so that when we reach that level, we don't end up with like a Gunderson Road two eleven issue. In this T S P, cause that, that's, I know that's been an issue.
Are you talking about the, like, the thousand eighty two?
Exactly.
Yeah, we already added that into the code actually, since that fiasco down there, so that's actually already in the code and a fair objective banner.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll continue to look at opportunities like that, where we anticipate other code issues like that.
And other, other communities as we grow, like, is that something you address in here?
Uh, no, that's for the thousand average daily trips.
I mean, I thought that was out of our, our T S P before.
Pretty sure it was, and then I think short, shortly after the Bailey Meadow, Meadows, Shaly Meadows thing, I worked with. One of our city attorneys from Burial Center Ham, and we added that standard to the code, so it is in the code now.
It's in here too, I just did not find it, somewhere in here, I know we say what the preferred. Sorry, I'm trying to find it on the fly here, but.
Me, does it say preferred? I, I just, I.
Well, it's in the code and that's.
You have to be cleared.
Yeah, and. Sorry, yeah, the, yeah, and the T S P gives ranges, but the code is a hundred percent.
So the, the T S P gives ranges and preferences, the code says exactly what you have to follow, yeah. So yes, there is a difference between the code and what T S P says.
Not conflicting, just the T S P is not as strong. Okay, tell me, I'm Charleston Johnson.
Yeah, for a couple minutes.
Alright. Hey, Darcy.
Hi, can you guys hear, can everyone hear me alright? Yes.
And Darcy, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So very quickly, very high level, um. Municipal code modifications are limited to your title seventeen, your development code. First and foremost, wanna make sure that your updated standards and recommendations and your T S P are consistent with your development requirements. So over time you are consistent with, you get the system that you've planned for. Also, many of the changes, um, were in effort to. Uh, make sure that the requirements are clear and unambiguous, so that's helpful for developers, it's helpful for code administrators and decision makers. Um, also wanna note that in your materials you have, um, you know, the underlined strikeout, uh, proposed amendment language. Um, prefaced by a table, uh, that characterizes the changes. And also shows in the last column how the changes implement or are consistent with the transportation planning rule. So early in the process, in the planning process for the T S P update, we did an audit, uh, to see where some areas of code could be strengthened. And, uh, the result is, uh, the proposed language as well as a citation, so that helps make findings. Um, to, um, s- support your adoption of updated code language. Um, the good news is unlike the T S P, uh, you are gonna see the code language again before you need to make a. A decision or recommendation about adoption, um, because they are going with, uh, they will be considered with a package of housing related. Clear and objective related, um, code amendments that you'll be considering later in the year. So, uh, with that, we can go to the next slide, um, so what are these changes? Just a very, uh, small addition to invite, uh, other, uh, transportation providers to, uh, the table. When you have, uh, decisions that require quasi judicial hearings, um, and then most of the changes are related to improvements that are required with development. Um, definitely strengthening your, your code, uh, to, um, address multimodal, so bike, ped. Requirements, uh, again, consistency, uh, the updates have to do with adding cross section. Uh, figures, tables from your T S P, um, there's a large, uh, kind of section of code related to clear and object requirement. So creating that path, um, for residential development. Pedestrian circulation connectivity, uh, for parking lots, again, talking a little bit more about how folks can get around those safely. And, uh, a connections to transit facilities, so those are all kind of updated language to existing sections predominantly. Um, and then making sure that, uh, your existing transit related requirements of developers. Are consistent with your transit master plan, so that's a small add to an existing code section. So the next slide, uh, continuing with improvements required with development. Um, some updates to your traffic impact study criteria and, uh, the real. New language has to do with, um, clear, uh, clear language related to conditions of approval. And making sure that, uh, when you do condition development, that it's roughly proportionate to the expected impact. So we've added some language related to that. Again, another kind of larger section related to residential proposals. And there's also a new letter requirement for, uh, development that's proposing twenty or fewer peak hour. Vehicular trips, that's an important distinction, that's not in the slide. Uh, moving to the parking, loading and access, a couple very minor, um, uh, updates for. Uh, making sure we get some parking for bicycles, uh, for a couple of, of uses, transit stations and park and ride lots. Um, and then access spacing standards, consistency with the T S P there. Updated new transportation definitions that should make sense, again, used in the T S P or it's used in the code, wanna have a definition for. For those terms, a big bullet that I should have put in, uh, I, I wanna say it fell off, but I think I'd never just put it in. Um, really has to do with your street standards and classifications, adding the right of way widths, including your new local street, uh, cross sections. Um, and, uh, some new language related to cul-de-sac and dead end streets, uh, being very. Clear that those are not preferred, but when they are allowed, uh, what standards do you have to meet in order to, um. Put those in a development. So, that's my quick overview, right at seven o'clock. Um, again, uh, this is an opportunity to avail yourself of, uh, of Ria, the D K S team. Myself and Brandon Crawford, uh, who are, uh, transportation planners, but more land use planners, code, code heads. Um, and, you know, funneling those questions, uh, through city staff would be great. Uh, we're still here and available to you until which time your, your T S P is adopted. And then again, there's another opportunity to make sure that everything is dialed in a hundred percent correct. Um, as you go forward with your, um, housing related, uh, amendments, we've already done quite a lot of. Uh, cross check, uh, but I'm sure there are still things that need to be, uh, corrected. So when those are found, we'll definitely be working through those in one big package for you later in the summer or fall.
Hey, can I just have one quick comment on that?
Sure.
So if anybody is actually looking through all those code edits and kinda like tonight where you saw errors and graphics and different things, please send them over to us, cause. Codes, it's just always very hard to look through, and the more eyes on it, the better, so. If you do have a little time to look through those and you catch what you think are errors, please send them to us.
Um, the, I like the, uh, uh, mention and inclusion of the, um, transit system. The thing that's always kind of gotten us in the past is the lack of cohesion or interplay between the, um, parks and. Basically the trails master plan and the T S P, and in the, in the trails master plan, we have, um. Options, for example, like where we already have development or we're not gonna get development for many years, the potential to develop like packed gravel trails. You know, because we know we're not gonna have sidewalks or the money to do all that, stuff like along Kelso Road and things like that. And so doing whatever we need to do for this T S P to reference those projects in the trails master plan. And, you know, kinda having them in both places so that we don't get to, you know. Cross lines with trying to implement those projects, um, I know you've got multi, multimodal, but having.
Well, we have.
Gone through the past when there was kind of.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just a lack of cohesion.
Yeah, all the T projects are for the trails that it would be in public right away, we included all of those.
Yeah, no.
There's fifty, fifty four of them.
Yeah.
Well, they're not.
Yeah, so that's, that, I, I agree, that that's something that we need to make sure we're doing a better job of, that's making those bankies, so.
Good, thank you.
Alright.
Anything else?
I think we're good, thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you everyone for coming out for this, appreciate it. We're in the during our work session. Be at about seven oh seven. Alright, and call our meeting to order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ever to God. In the name of this world with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, um, I will do a quick review of what we're doing tonight, um, we will shortly call the roll. I'll ask for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda, we'll then get into public comment, just still nobody submitted online or any cards.
That's correct.
Alright, uh, well then, uh, with no public comment from our last meeting, we'll move ahead to our, uh, presentation. Uh, from Nellie DeBries on our government relations update. We'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our April third, uh, meeting, as well as a contract amendment number three. Wastewater Treatment Plant Engineering Services, under new business, we have a discussion on our twenty twenty three pavement maintenance program construction contract. And then we'll round off our evening with a report from the city manager and our committee and council, uh, reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Pastor Me.
Present.
Pastor Smallwood.
Here.
Pastor Sheldon.
Here.
Pastor Walker.
Here.
Pastor Exner.
Uh, excuse?
Pastor Huckinson.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Here, thank you for that, um, alright, any, um, proposed changes to tonight's agenda? During that, we'll move forward to public comments, I mentioned, there's been no, uh, uh, forums, uh, submitted or anything online. So we'll move ahead to a presentation for government relations update, Nellie, you're up. Feel free there, there, probably there. Wherever you're most comfortable.
I think sitting is a little less.
I, it's kinda what I was thinking. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you all very much for having me here tonight, and, um, it is chilly out there, it feels a little bit like snow for this time. Anyway, I very much appreciate you having me here tonight and, uh, taking time to listen to my voice. But, um, we're, we've kind of reached the mid-session point in time, April fourth was the first chamber of origin deadline official. Where we're done with the work session portion of stuff. And so with that, a lot of bills died, um, unfortunately not enough, but that is fairly common with any session. I, um, sent you all a memo that, um, discussed kind of where we're at. Uh, unfortunately, the, um, we are now reading all of the bills on the session floor, word for word. Which has made meetings, um, with senators interesting. Um, but you know, it's, it, it technically has not been as polarized as it has been in the last few sessions. I will say, it's been, um, we've got so many freshman legislators that I think that everyone is really kind of trying to reach across the aisle. And talk to one another, and it's been fairly congenial, all things said. Um, anyway, with that, an update on the drinking water system reinvestment program. So with that, we've met with everyone on the, um, capital construction committee. With the exception of Ways and Means co-chair Steiner, who we have a meeting with on the twenty sixth. And I believe, uh, Mayor Polian is going to attend with me, I don't know if others will as well. Um, but that was a very difficult meeting to get. Um, all that being said, I think, you know, we're, we're making progress, I just met with Senator Frederick last week on Wednesday. And, um, so we, I mean, he actually came off the floor while they were reading the bills, cause that was during our meeting time. So that was a fun process, but he actually. Was very receptive to everything, everyone that we've met with has been very receptive, sorry, I should look up at that other screen. But everyone has been very receptive to, um. Our ask, the, the issue has always been just, um. Whether or not the money's gonna be there, and so I've gotten confirmation that, um, the I two oh five bridge, that's a huge. Ask from Tina, I still feel like it might be, it'll be interesting to see whether or not that happens. I, it, it will likely, the funding might happen, but that's all bonding and it's gonna be five years from now, so. In theory, that gives us a little bit more leeway than we had before. Um, but it's, it's still a significant challenge, um, for the ask, but, uh. He did recommend that we bring a fourteen year old specifically, um, to speak after a stand. So, excuse me, sorry, let me back up, let me go back three steps, um, we will have, uh, Mayor Polian come and do his ninety. Um, minute, or ninety minute, ninety second. Yeah, you're, you're giving your, yeah.
State of the city.
No, so unfortunately, you're only allowed ninety seconds to do your presentation about your capital construction water ask. And that's going to be on May fifth, so I was able to get confirmation from that with Senator Gerard's office, who's a co-chair of the Ways and Means. Or co-chair of the Capital Construction Ways and Means Subcommittee. And so, um, with that, it was also recommended that perhaps you have a child that wants water. Drinkable water.
A kid that might wanna drink water? We can probably find one.
I can't say that I, it's a strong recommendation from my part, because, but it was a recommendation, so I wanted to be sure to share it with everyone. And it's not, it's not a terrible idea.
No, no, um, why don't we, uh, have somebody on staff reach out to Sarah at the library? Who's been, at least in the past, active with some of the civic classes and stuff, um, see if maybe there's kind of a shining star coming out of there that might be interested in it, like this.
I mean, if we can, if we can get the testimony, if we can at least get the spaces.
Well, or we could have one of Representative Heeb's twenty children, you know.
Oh.
Go to the microphone.
And I have to, I have to give a special thank you to Representative Heeb and also Senator Bonham. And these two wonderful human beings for being so supportive and having all the information that we. And these two wonderful human beings for being so supportive and having all the information that we need to get everything put together. It's been, it's, it's, it's an uphill process, but we're getting there. And it's been really interesting to witness kind of the, the differences between the freshmen and the more senior legislators. Because the more senior legislators have gotten a little diva status. So Representative Heeb is just graciously confirmed that he's willing to reach out to Senator Smith. Or excuse me, Representative Smith. And so, you know, it's just, it's just a process of juggling things. So we're getting there. And I did reach out also to Legislative Fiscal Office Walt. And he said, it's still a little bit early, but we're working hard to get to where essentially we want to be. And so he said, just give it time, still too early. And so the good news is we're ahead of the ball. And I'm terrible at an analogy, so I apologize if I missed that.
So one of the questions on capital construction and going through this process with the bonding, it's just how much air is the I five bridge project going to suck out of the roof?
That, that is, that is a concern. I'm, I'm going to be upfront with you. That is a serious concern. Because that's a significant amount of money, but it would be bonding and it's kind of coming. I mean, everything's ultimately coming out of general fund, but it's, it's. I don't think it killed, I don't, I don't by any means think it kills the project. It's just.
Makes it harder.
Yes, it makes it a little bit harder, but.
Why we need a precocious twelve, fourteen-year-old to give our message.
Yes. And also why it's good to have a meeting with Steiner, Senator Steiner. I mean, she's co-chair of the full Ways and Means as well as on the Capitol Construction. And she is a very influential, and I mean, she's worked with Betsy Johnson for years. And so she's. Not gonna like getting that meeting wasn't even, but we got it. So I think that conversation will be really good. And I think that there will be a lot of things. So it's important that we get as much conversation there as we can. So with that, so we've got the meeting on May fifth. And the meeting with Steiner on the twenty-sixth of April, which is wonderful. Would you, do you have any conversation about that project? Or would you like me to go into other bills?
I feel good with that. Just thank you for, you've done a considerable amount of work, getting this in the door and a lot of activity. Keeping it top of mind for those committee members. So I know we really appreciate it.
Yes, and I will, and just for, so you know, I will continue reaching out to the co-chairs of the Capitol Construction Committee. To make sure that we're still top of mind. And we were fortunate enough to have Senator Bonham put us at the top of his request list. And he's close with Senator Gerard, who is co-chair of the Ways.
So where do we sit with this? Did it go anywhere where they were talking about allocating so much money for rural communities out of capital construction?
Still too early.
Still too early.
Yeah, it's, I, I expect to learn something mid-month, mid-next month likely. I think, I think once we get through May fifth, we'll know a lot more. But it's not there yet. And I had, I had, I had actually asked Walt, who's in charge of everything in Legislative Fiscal Office about that. And he said, it's still too early, so.
Well, you've done a nice job. Other than that, providing a memo that looks like a Halloween horror movie. Of legislation coming out of the legislature.
Sorry about that, guys.
So, I mean, is this just the best hits of what's going to happen or?
So.
I would say these are, these are more bills that we knew might be of the council's interest, not necessarily that they're more likely to happen or not. Although, you know. So it does line up with the governor's priorities.
So I guess I'll just jump ahead, especially like the variance bill, H B thirty-four fourteen. And the converting commercial properties into residential, H B twenty-nine eighty-four.
Twenty-nine eighty-four is sailing.
It's sail. Thirty-five sixty-nine seems to have hit some speed bump.
Correct.
Which one?
Thirty-five sixty-nine, it's the right to housing. It establishes an alternative process by which local government must approve an application to develop housing on land zoned. To allow residential uses.
That's very broadly.
That's the fast track, right? Like that's fast track house.
Correct.
Change zoning.
It, it, it establishes an alternate process by which local governments may adopt.
It doesn't change zoning, but basically the way it was written would basically fast track.
If you had an S F R area and they wanted to come in and put in multifamily on this process, fast track. Does that allow, are you required to change the zoning from single-family residential to multifamily under this proposal?
I believe it's more of whether or not the local government chooses to use that alternative route.
But just to point out, it's, it appears to be changing now. I think that the way it was originally worded wasn't going to move. And so it's been parked over in rules now.
So, so let me back up again. So essentially what happens after Chamber of Origin deadline, bills are in policy committees. And if you start in the House and you start in the Senate and the bill doesn't move out then of that committee, then it's dead. Essentially, and if it does move out of that committee, what they, common practice is to move it into a committee that doesn't shut down. So you've got rules, revenue and ways and means. And those are kind of the three committees that keep bills alive. And so generally they get moved into rules, especially something like this, because it doesn't necessarily. Relate to the other two committees. And so then what happens when they're in rules is eventually at the end of session, everything dies. But it's still alive until the end of session. So all of these bills have ended up in rules pretty much. So. I'm just saying that they're all very much alive. I would agree with what Jeff just said, that thirty-five sixty-nine, the right to housing, that bill. I mean, even L O C said it's come up on, you know, some tough ground, but it is still alive.
So we, we have these, we, we, most weeks updates from the league. And sit in on those webinars. I think two weeks ago, Jordan, wasn't it where they said thirty-five sixty-nine? Which is again, just one example, but the way that it was, the way they put it was, is not going to survive in its current form. So it may, I mean, it can get amended, obviously.
And then converting commercial properties into residential.
That thing, so really City Happy Valley, Tom Ellis has opposed that as well. And Clean Water Services and the rest are all generally independent. I know, um, commercial real estate individuals in the city of Portland. Have not really taken a major stance on that. I don't have a lot of reason for that, other than they have a new executive or an interim executive director. But have tried to get them more engaged. NAOP has not taken a position. It's, it's, I mean, it is Pam Marsh's baby. And it is, it sailed through everything and it's currently scheduled for. A work session scheduled for the twenty-sixth.
So is this one of those, that's like the last one where the mirror was thrown a temper tantrum and we needed to reel it in a little bit? Where the things fly in no matter what we do and we just need to focus on our major priority?
Yes.
Well, I ask about thirty-four fourteen, the variance bill. Cause that's the one that's really. I so appreciate Representative Heeb being here tonight. Because, you know, we all have development code. We just talked about editing our development code. And from what I can understand, this bill would basically make all of our development code subject to be canceled out. A request for a variance to not have to meet any of our development codes. I don't know if that means changing the zoning again from single-family residential to high density. And again, we already have a huge amount of our city zone for high density and median density. And I'm all supportive of that because we need it. But I'm not supportive of taking our largest lots and allowing apartments on there. So changing the zoning, eliminating parking requirements. Do they have to have any of the park dedication requirements, parkland dedication requirements? Do they have, I mean, there's so many development code strategies, the setbacks, the, the lot sizes. Are all those things that we require on our development code, subject to being canceled out? Because they think they cost too much money or they could make, you know, throw in more houses that look, you know, with tiki-tacky. Two T eleven, T one eleven siding and stuff like that. When we have code that says you have to have something nicer, is all that being thrown to the side because of this bill? Is there no limits to it? I guess that's my question.
I don't think it's quite to that level. But it is certainly going to give. A lot more lenience in terms of building housing on property.
I think. I don't think, certainly I'm not, I don't think Nellie is an expert on all of the ways in which that's going to necessarily play with our development code. And I also think it's still subject to being changed. It looks like there's a recent amendment. It's hard to answer that question.
The goodness is with this briefing, click and follow and find those patterns we're talking about.
They carved out some exceptions for safety.
Livability or something, but who defines that? Yeah.
Right, exactly. And a lot of that will be subject to rulemaking. So it's hard to know. In fact, I'm, I'm comfortable saying we have no idea exactly how it's going to necessarily affect us.
But it just, you know, it, it appears to kind of basically eliminate the need for a planning commission in every town. When all they have to do is ask for variances from most anything they want. And, and then they go to the statewide group that's going to get set up. So that just really, it just, again, I'm not all about the rules, but we got to have a few rules around here. And, you know, otherwise we're the ones that live with consequences when people don't have a place to park their car. And what I was telling Nellie before is, you know, people live in Sandy, they have two big pickup trucks and two cars. You have four cars per person, per family almost. I mean, I don't know what the average car, but it's pretty high and nobody's riding their bikes into work in Portland. So, you know, we have to have enough parking and, you know, things like that to make it livable. And I don't know what kind of exceptions you're going to get out of that, you know, who decides livability. But it does concern me that that kind of a rule that basically eliminates and just gives the developers, you know. That we have to say yes to any variance that they request scares the daylights out of me.
And I, I think big picture and everyone knows I'll go straight to home rule.
Right.
Is, and I think the message I love with Representative Heeb of the room to hear too is, is whenever, you know. We, we, we have all kinds of personalities up here. We debate these issues at nauseam. But at the end of the day, we're all neighbors here in Sandy that then have to live with the consequences of these decisions. And, you know, we have a very high awareness level of what our community can take, what it shouldn't take. What in regard to housing, it's zoning, the setbacks. And, you know, I think what we want is we just want the power to be able to have rulemaking in our own community. You know, and our own authority over what happens in our own community. So I think that's really where the decisions are made best. So on this, I guess the only thing I would ask Nellie is, is while you're in the building. To try to find strategic alliances where they make sense for us to have a more vocal, you know, ability to be more vocal on some of these issues. You know, like if, if you're, you're feeling alignment with the League of Oregon Cities. Some different groups are coming in to testify against something. I don't think any of us want, we, we all recognize we're eleven thousand population, right? That's right. But, and we don't want it, we, we, we're, we're getting higher and higher. We don't want to stand in the way of us getting an important financial request. Something's just selling through. But if there's opportunity to actually have impact by joining in with other groups that are starting to coalesce against, you know, one of these. I think we would be interested in joining in on something.
Okay, I appreciate that feedback. I think that it, it has not yet been scheduled for a public hearing on the Senate side. It has passed the House. But, excuse me, no, it's in rules. Sorry, I'm bouncing back and forth on bills. So it's, it's in rules. So it, you know, there's still time to, to create that feedback. So I will do my best.
Enterprise, it looks like it's going to get expanded or there's.
That seems to be moving, which is good news. And the grants for regional housing coordinators, that bill is still, that's House Bill thirty-one seventy-four. That's still alive in Ways and Means, which is to be expected. But it, it seems like we'll see what the funding process is. The drinking water bills, the safe drinking water bills, they're mostly related to agriculture realistically, but they all seem to be moving. They're all representative homes bills, that's twenty-eight thirteen, thirty-one twenty-five. Those are all still alive. They have passed out of Ways and Means of due pass recommendations. Which is good, but it's not necessarily going to help your fourteen point four million dollar ask.
But it could potentially, and Jenny's on, I mean, could it potentially help with our salmon water rights?
Yes. Yes. So I mean, it doesn't hurt. It's good, it's a good, a good process.
What's that? So salmon reserve. Not out there catching the salmon.
One more quick thing to note, Mayor, is that thirty-four fourteen and Pastor Walker, that was the various bill that you were talking about. I think the league is on the record opposed to that bill. So that's nice. So that, you know, there's some coordination there.
Well, let's continue on. Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time and all of you, and thank you for your service.
No, you're, you're helping out a lot. I mean, the last few asks have been, you know, really, you know, we've been successful, but it has not been streamlined. It says, get in front of as many people as you're getting us in front of. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, we've got a, we've got a good team together. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, totally. Moving ahead on the consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from our April third meeting. So it's the contract amendment number three wastewater treatment plant engineering services. Unless there's any questions or discussion, I'll go ahead and take a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All right. Motion by Counselor Walker, a second by Counselor Huckinson to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or giving a thumbs up. Opposed or thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving ahead to new business, twenty twenty-three pavement maintenance program construction contract. Is that what Jenny's waiting for?
Good evening, everyone. It's a good segue with the T S P work session. So the decision to be made tonight is whether to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with the low bid. Which was Knife River Corporation for the twenty twenty-three pavement maintenance program construction project. So the city uses pavement maintenance software to prioritize street maintenance projects. And we do a condition survey every five years. These are paid for using local option fuel tax revenue. And generally, the city historically completes about five hundred thousand to sometimes six hundred thousand every two years. It's a little more cost efficient to do more every two years. These generally are asphalt overlays and surface treatments. The goal of the program is to keep the pavement condition index at eighty or better. That's the optimal range. And the, the thought behind this is it's a lot more cost effective for ratepayers to do smaller maintenance repairs to streets. Keep them in good condition before letting the streets deteriorate to such a condition. That they have to be wholly replaced at a much higher cost. So historically. The pavement condition index was at seventy-four in the year two thousand and one. And in the year twenty twenty, the city had actually increased the score to eighty. The point that we do want to make here is the five-year assessment had said we need to budget about five hundred thousand. Every year as opposed to every two years to keep our condition index at that eighty level. With the level of investment we have in our budget, we do project that the condition index will drop to around seventy-seven. In the year twenty twenty-five. I think the point is. I think the point is that, uh, especially with three sixty second and bell, we can't, um, do everything, so there is a small deterioration, and we will be focusing on increasing, uh, the budget for the PCI once we're through that project. We did actually delay putting this project out for construction last summer, um, merely, simply to balance the budget. Um, we did receive three bids on March twenty first. The low bid was Knife River at five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars. And these are within our budget, although this will be completed in next year's biennium, so after July first of this year. And the proposed budget will be paid for from the street utility fund from the fiscal year twenty four twenty five biennium budget. And, uh, the low bidder was actually underneath the engineer's estimate of six hundred thousand.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there any questions or a motion?
I have a question, just one.
Please do.
Jenny, I'm sorry, it's Chris. I just had a question on the bids. Um, I don't know if you know this answer or not, but S two contractors, on their bid, they were significantly higher on Schedule B three, which was a story mix, and I just was wondering why they were so different. That was, I mean, literally about a seventy thousand dollar difference between the other two contractors. And I I saw it was their price per square yard was almost double. What were they doing differently than the other two?
Um.
Or was it just their pricing model?
My guess is it would just be their pricing model, contractors structured their numbers different based on the suppliers. Um, but we did have Corinne McLeod review this and said that we do have uh, no concerns with the low bid estimate. Sometimes, you know, you do notice something that's missing, and you don't want to enter into a a contract, you know, with a change order waiting.
Really concerning, because the other, the third party bid the same amount as the low bid. It was, they were in close proximity, but that that was just the one line item that stood out to me, so I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion to proceed?
Let's start, maybe. I move, um, yeah, let you read it.
I have one more question.
Never mind.
Is Pleasant, I'm sorry, is, so is your map that's on, um, page nine, almost to the end, and I apologize if I didn't get to that. Is that what are the projects are, the spot repairs?
Yeah, I have a list in case somebody asks.
And but my biggest question is, you know, the 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 worst road that I drive on is, you know, be, uh, is pleasant and hood. And, uh, is is that, I see a little bit of hood maybe, huh? But Pleasant has nothing. It's it's also orange in your inventory.
Keep, can I see this somewhere? From our presentation, a road drops significantly below its index, then it's on a run to fail mode, and they replace it because it becomes more cost effective to let it completely die, so.
There's a little bit of Pleasant.
Is that, is that Pleasant? Maybe, yeah, yeah, the maps, okay, yeah. Well, anyway, I see the map. I see the list. Um, I'm good with it.
See that? So, ready?
Yeah.
Well, that's who is with Pleasant Street, but.
Yeah.
Okay, now I move. I moved to accept the low bid of five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty eight dollars with Knife River Corporation for the twenty twenty three pavement maintenance program construction contract and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Knife River Corporation to complete this project.
Is there a second? Also, a motion by Councilor Hope consent, a second by Councilor Nathan. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. I oppose nays or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Jenny. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Jordan, you're up. Report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of things here. First, I want to congratulate Jenny, um, and Tyler was there as well. Um, Jenny presented to Business Organ for the seven million, um, loan for the planning, design, engineering for a portion of our, uh, water project, um, and that's the the pipeline to the Bull Run Source. Um, we still really need that fourteen million, though. It's a seven-year planning, uh, loan, a planning loan, so it's a quick payback. Um, but, uh, this is, you know, one of the pieces of of the funding puzzle that we're putting together for, uh, the water system. And then on the, another thing regarding legislative updates, um, I do have a meeting this Friday with other city managers in the area to meet with LOC. Um, this was one of those meetings that came out of, uh, I think the LOC's advocacy and home rule authority. Um, and I think the purpose really is gonna be, how can cities be a better partner with LOC, um, as we go into legislative sessions? Um, how can we give input to the LOC, uh, to advocate for cities' home rule authorities? Um, and be a little bit more part of the, um, I guess legislative agenda setting for the LOC and position LOC uh, on either opposing or supporting or not, getting a better understanding of how they, um, you know, approach what to do with some of these bills, right? Um, so that's gonna be down in most of the on Friday. Uh, I'll report out on how that goes, but.
The one thing I'd like to send you with is when they say that our legislators are sick and tired of hearing the word home rule come out of our mouth, that's what we've been educated on. You may want to remind them that three quarters of the legislature is new this year.
Yeah.
And so it's pretty impossible for them to be sick and tired of hearing something that they haven't heard of before.
Have you heard that they're sick and tired?
Um, and then finally, uh, you know, the Budget Committee meeting, uh, is on Thursday, uh, so we're we're excited to to kick that off. Um, hopefully we gave you a pretty late night tonight. Have enough energy to uh, to review a bunch of tables and numbers, um, as we go through, uh, the budget process. So Thursday, following Thursday, and we've we've held off, uh, we've we've reserved an evening in May, too, if we need that third, uh, meeting for adoption. So we'll see you back in this room, uh, on Thursday at six a, uh, six P M.
Turn the name.
Almost at A M, right?
Is that the report?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. And Don.
Let's go home, Bernie.
Yeah, I'm with you. All right, Kathleen.
Want to shout out to the Public Works folks, um, also, you know, from what he said, but also they got, um, the crossing there at Marcy Street, which was on our TSP for a hundred and twenty five thousand. I hope they didn't spend that much on it, but it's great. Um, I, as I drive down bluff all the time, the kids are crossing there at the school crossing, and it does make it a lot safer. So thank you so much to that department for getting that done. And, uh, the Easter egg hunt was wonderful there in the city park and, um, yeah, the the Kuanis, it was a big partnership with the city and Kuanis and everybody else. Thank you.
And Kathleen stole my thunder about the Easter egg hunt, but, uh, it was pretty awesome. Took my little man there for the first time in a couple of years, and that was total chaos there for a little while. It was awesome to watch. Uh, on a different note, though, um, I have noticed you see aggression super often, but I've seen it start popping up around Sandy, and that is the people selling oranges and flowers and stuff in medias. Um, I don't, it was over there by, uh, I was on three sixty second last time over there, um, road that runs behind the, uh, gas station. But if we don't have an ordinance like that, I'd really like to explore that. Um, because I, for one, I don't think it's a safe thing, um, especially with traffic and that. Um, and two, I just don't think it's gonna be in line with, uh, our current practice of trying to limit areas in which people can be. And impose their business license.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Impose our business license for us. Yeah, I mean, whatever it takes, um, but I I also think that there's gotta be, uh, maybe ordinance for selling items in the median. I I I, it's not safe. So simple as that. Um, but it is starting to pop up. I've seen it a couple of times, um, and I've also heard about it a couple of times, and like I said, drive through aggression, you can't help it, so. So I would hate to see it in the vote. That is it. Lori?
Uh, not much really to report. Uh, Parks and Trails met this week, and they're just working on their cost recovery model, which will be brought before council for approval ultimately. Uh, they've been working hard on that, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Chris.
I did economic development, uh, last week, and we did our final review of the strategic plan that's coming to council for review and approval. Uh, no planning issue meeting.
That's it. Perfect. All right, for my report is, as we all know, uh, Jordan announced at our last council meeting, you know, his decision to move on to another, uh, community. Of course, we wish him the best in that. Uh, but it left us with a little bit of homework to do, um, as a council. Um, kind of the two different paths that we need to go down is, uh, the appointment of an interim uh, city manager, as well as, um, go through a path of of a search for a more permanent uh, replacement for city manager. Um, I, uh, you know, kind of took, uh, the orders to go figure this out from the last, uh, meeting, and and it sat down and had coffee with, uh, you know, I think two of the a couple of the candidates to really talk through kind of short-term and long-term plans and kind of where they fit into the city. And I also utilized the committee, uh, made up of Angela, Jordan, uh, Lori, and and Dawn to kind of discuss some of our options so that develop a recommendation to me that to provide, uh, here at the council. I think, uh, our best, uh, way forward, uh, that I would propose to our council is to appoint, uh, Tyler Deans, who's our, uh, finance director. It's our interim city manager with Jeff Operati that serves as a really strong, uh, number two, obviously. As I told Tyler today with this recommendation, I've ruined this summer. Uh, so I think, you know, he's definitely gonna need to utilize, um, Jeff pretty heavily and just trying to cover with, uh, with, uh, an individual out that transitioning on. Um, and so my recommendation would be to appoint, uh, both Tyler as an interim city manager, as well as appoint a group, uh, probably just mainly Jordan and Angie to work, uh, to develop, uh, contracts on an interim basis for the interim city manager. Um, and then going forward, we, at our next city council meeting, we'll have a work session, uh, with Angie, where we're able to kind of spell out exactly what we're looking for as a council, and both the search for a city manager, as well as the experience, personality, and all those kinds of things that we're looking for, uh, in the next city. Uh, so if you guys are good with that, I would love to entertain a motion, uh, to adopt, uh, the mayor's, uh, recommendations to appoint Tyler Deans as our interim city manager.
I'll make the recommendation.
Yeah.
Or you want to call it?
Yeah.
Motion.
Yeah.
I'll sign it.
Um, there's a motion by, uh, Counselor Sheldon, and a second by Counselor Nathan, uh, to adopt the mayor's, uh, recommendation to appoint Tyler Deans as our interim city manager. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. I oppose nays or a thumbs down. All right, motion carries. We'll figure out the contract and your acceptance, but thank you, uh, for your willingness to step up, Tyler. We're looking forward to working with you over the next several months.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I just have one more?
Please do.
Just for us, a period, um, I think it's important to, I mean, I mentioned earlier, uh, to the mayor. We're at a crossroad. We could, we're losing our police chief in a few months, too. And the city manager has a lot of relationship with a police chief, and so we need to do our best to fast track getting a permanent person filled as quickly as we can for that city manager role, regardless of whether it's somebody new or Tyler, whoever that is, uh, we just need to do as quick as possible, so we can start building that relationship with the police chief and the rest of the staff here in the cities.
Totally agree. All right, that's what I have. With that all adjourned, thank you, everybody.